Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, December 5th, 2017. Would you all stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we appear to have a one, two, three, four members. So, we have a quorum, and David Samuel is with us this evening by phone. Welcome, David.
Thank you.
Can you hear us okay? I'm just curious.
I can certainly hear you just fine.
Okay, very good. All right. I don't think we need to... I know Joe Blanchett is not going to be here this evening. He is absent. I don't think we have to appoint any alternates. So with that, I'm going to do a roll call of the members present. Michael Proto, Chair.
Kimberly Queen, Vice Chair.
Tyler Perrin, Member.
Brent Lemire, Selectment's Rep.
Dave Samuel, Member.
Okay, great. All right, the first item on the agenda this evening is public input. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak or come forward for the Board this evening? Hearing none, I will close public input, and we will proceed with the first item on the agenda this evening. We have a couple of things on the agenda this evening regarding public hearing. In accordance with New Hampshire RSA 675-7, the Litchfield Planning Board is holding a public meeting this evening on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, at 7:00 PM here in the Town Hall Meeting Room, Two Liberty Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire, to consider the following changes to the Litchfield zoning ordinance and site plan regulations. The first one is to amend the zoning section 507.05, Section B, accessory dwelling units, administration to remove requirement for certificate of compliance. The second, to add a new section 1040.00 to the zoning ordinance for demolition review of structures built prior to 1960 and greater than 500 square feet contingent upon the establishment of a Litchfield Heritage Commission. And lastly, to amend the site plan review regulations, Sections 115.2.65, nonconforming pre-existing luminaire and external lighting sections, 163.2 and 163.4, to allow in-kind replacement of nonconforming lighting and simplify general standards to say lighting and lights shall be shielded or buffered. Full copies of these proposed amendments have been available for public inspection in the Selectment's viewing room here in the Town Hall during normal business hours. And this information has also been available on the Town website at litchfieldnewhampshire.gov, Town Government Planning Board. With that said, we will begin with the first item for public hearing this evening regarding zoning section 507.05B, accessory dwelling units, administration to remove requirement for certificate of compliance. Is there anyone who wishes to speak before the Board this evening on this particular...
Can I just... pardon my ignorance, but just a capsule version of what that is?
Sure. Basically, the accessory dwelling unit was adopted in March 13th, 2012, the section 507, and it was amended in March 21st, 2017. Basically, what that says is that the accessory dwelling unit shall be administered by the code enforcement officer, building inspector, in accordance with this ordinance. ADUs require a building permit where expansion of the primary dwelling's footprint is planned, or there is a question regarding existing setback compliance, the building inspector may require a certified lot plan. There was also a Section B to that particular ordinance which regarded a certificate of compliance, which would be a certain... which may be a certificate of occupancy, is required for each change of ownership if the owner chooses to continue an ADU, and the ADU shall not be occupied without a certificate of compliance issued by the building inspector. What the Planning Board has done, it has eliminated that section and basically to have... to basically eliminate the certificate of compliance and to basically make the Section C, section... the old Section B, which would basically say that the code enforcement officer or building inspector shall keep records of accessory dwelling units and include statistics on approved, discontinued, and current number of ADUs for town reports. So basically, what this is, is it's eliminating the certificate of occupancy requirement to this particular ordinance.
Okay.
And just to clarify, they still would require, you know, a building permit and certificate of occupancy at time of construction. It's just upon transfer of ownership. And this was something that Town Council had flagged as something that the Town likely does not have legal authority to require.
Okay.
And so she had just flagged this one provision and said, "I don't think you're allowed to do this. You might want to delete this one provision."
Okay. Chief, you're all set. Okay, great. Just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. On this particular ordinance or the amendment to the zoning section, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point, and I'm going to ask the members of the Board, do the members of the Board have any questions as to the ordinance or the amendment? Hearing none, I'm going to ask that the Board entertain a motion to allow this particular zoning ordinance... this amendment to this zoning ordinance to remove the requirement for certificate of compliance under Section 507.05B of the regulations.
So the motion would be to send this amendment to Town Meeting?
Send it to Town... I'm sorry, the motion would be to send this amendment to Town Meeting.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. Those opposed? Abstained? I'm going to take a roll call vote because David is with us this evening by phone. So, Michael Proto, Chair.
Kimberly Queen, Vice Chair. Our clerk is missing, Joe.
That's okay.
Tyler Perrin, Member.
Brent Lemire, yes.
So those are all yes votes?
So we're all yes. So the motion passes 5-0-0. Okay. So that will... you will see that on the ballot at Town Meeting. That takes care of that. The next notice for public hearing is regarding Section 1040.00 to the zoning ordinance for demolition review of structures built prior to 1960 and greater than 500 square feet contingent upon establishment of a Litchfield Heritage Commission. I'm going to have... ask my esteemed Vice Chair this evening to present this particular amendment, the ordinance.
Jen, do you mind putting the flow chart up there? Does everybody have the flow chart? If anybody in the audience needs a copy of the flow chart, or do you want to just look at it on the screen over here?
Maybe.
Does anybody else want one, or roll a sec?
It's thinking.
Yeah, can you see at the second page? Okay. I want to make sure readability is all right.
I guess there's a two-page full screen.
Good. We're trying to introduce a zoning ordinance to... for the demolition process today. I'm going to have the boxes disappear. There we go. Well...
There we go.
I think... is it just best if I go through the flow chart at this point, or...
There's copies of it on the table, too.
Yeah. Anytime a demolition permit is requested, or there's a site plan that comes before us and requires demolition of part of the process, today they go to the building inspector, code enforcement officer for an application. There was an internal process, kind of trying to mimic what is happening here, but we tried to make a formalized process. What we're trying to introduce now is if the structure that's going to, you know, be demolished is greater than 500 square feet and built prior to 1960, say it's not, doesn't meet that criteria, you would get your... the owner would be notified and they could go all the way down. Should I go up there? Should be easier to... I'll trip over this cord here. So what we're going to do is if the building inspector, code enforcement officer is going to ask this question, if the structure, a proposal to be demolished is greater than 500 square feet and built prior to 1960, say it's not, doesn't meet that criteria, you would get your... the owner would be notified and they could go all the way down. Should I go up there? Should be easier to... I'll trip over this cord here. So what we're going to do is if the building inspector, code enforcement officer is going to ask this question, if the structure, a proposal to be demolished is greater than 500 square feet and built prior to 1960, if it is not, the owner will be notified if it doesn't meet that criteria, and that application will be approved right away. If it does meet this criteria, the owner will be notified. They will also contact the fire department to determine both of them, if the building that is going to be demolished is deemed safe or unsafe. At the same time, they would also bring this information to the Heritage Commission, which doesn't exist yet, they're going to put it before the voters, to determine if the building is potentially historically culturally architected or significant. If the Heritage Commission deems that it is potentially historically culturally architected or significant, and the structure is deemed unsafe, the owner would be notified, and we would ask the owner, the Heritage Commission, to take photos, and if yes, allow the photos to be taken, and then grant it the permit. If it is potentially significant, the structure is deemed safe, the owner would ask, by public notice, on their property, to say that... excuse me, a representative to get placed to ground some of the possible property, informing the public at a date and time. Excuse me, I wasn't prepared for this kind of a detail. What this would do is the owner would put a sign on their property discussing the date and time, but the public could come in, the potential raise voice concerns of trying to save the building. Heritage Commission would also put a second notice in the newspaper for a hearing of the date and time for the town to appear. The Heritage Commission would hold a hearing with the public. Property owners or the representatives of the property owner must be notified and invited to the hearing. They're encouraged to participate, but they don't have to. The public would voice support and concerns and alternatives. We're going to try to find alternatives to the building coming down, whether they need to buy time, or try to raise money to buy the building, or along that line. The Heritage Commission would not be able to make any vote. We would just try to convince the property owner if we could try to save the building in some way. If the property owner wants to take the building down, they're allowed to do it. We would just ask to take photos, and then they could get their application. But both of these scenarios cover that case. If the property owner does not want to find any alternatives and wants to take the building down, they're allowed to do it. And if the property owner wants to try to find alternatives, we would introduce the building inspector, code enforcement officer, back into the process. Jen?
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions, as the members of the public, I should say, have any questions regarding this particular ordinance? Yes?
So ultimately, Kim...
Yeah.
Can we ask you to state your name?
Yes, Stephen.
And you can actually, if you could come up to the front and...
To the microphone.
Yes, so that we can hear you, and so that Dave can hear you on the...
Yes, Stephen Calo, 168 Charles Bancroft Highway. So ultimately, Kim, what this boils down to is that in the end, you cannot prevent someone from demolishing a building on their property.
That's right.
All that you're hoping to do is to suggest possible alternatives to save a historic or culturally significant building.
Yes.
Did you want to mention you made a presentation to the Board the other night?
Sure.
With Selectmen?
This whole process is contingent upon a new town entity being created, a Heritage Commission. Right, because the Heritage Commission would be the one who would determine if it was potentially significant. We went to the Board last Monday, the 27th, and the Board of Selectment approved for a Heritage Commission to be brought before the voters in January. So this demolition ordinance and the Heritage Commission would go onto the articles at the same time, to the voters.
And maybe if I could just add that we've worked with Town Council to craft the warrant article for this that would make the passage of the demolition review ordinance contingent upon the passage of the Heritage Commission.
Right.
So if the Heritage Commission were to fail, then even if the demolition review ordinance passed, it would by default fail as well because it would be linked to the Heritage Commission piece as well. And Council also kind of suggested some language that we could use to include an implementation delay for this ordinance, so that were it to pass at Town Meeting in March, that this particular ordinance would not become effective until July 1st. That is something that the Board can still debate. I mean, that's just a line in the warrant article, so we can... if July 1st is not enough time, we can delay that, but we need to figure that out in time to get the warrant article submitted. So the reason to put a delay on the implementation of the demolition review ordinance would be to allow time to put the Heritage Commission together, get established, and be ready to be able to. In terms of numbers of demolition permits, I think they've been negligible in the past few years, but it's more, I think, identified as a proactive step in kind of planning for preservation in the community, focusing on those historical resources in town.
Thank you, Jen. Any other questions for the public? Okay, with that said, I'm going to close this part of the public hearing. Does any members of the Board have any questions? Yes?
I do on the warrant article itself, the last sentence. I just want to make sure that that is in line with everything we've been discussing all along.
So that, we still have time to draft, we don't have to vote on, but we can... let me pull it up.
Yep. I just want to clarify just the last line.
Yeah.
And it may be okay.
Of which article?
Article XX.
Oh, okay. That's the one that's actually going to be the Selectment article. That was just sample.
Okay. It's really the last line I'm questioning because of the wordage before the voters. "The Heritage Commission can also accept and expand funds for a non-lapsing heritage fund," which we don't have one, so that's fine. There'd be nothing to transfer. "Acquire and manage property and hold preservation easements." I'm not sure that that... because we wanted this to be initially, you know, advisory only with, you know, nothing binding. So I don't know if that's legal, should be there or not, but I'll work with the Board. And maybe that's okay, but I just want to make sure.
Those are... those are all things that are within...
The statute.
The statutes for what a Heritage Commission may do, but this is kind of the stoop-to-nuts version that was provided as a sample for the Selectmen.
Okay, because I don't want the public to think, "Oh, we're going to be taking..."
It's theirs to write.
"...all this property," when we're saying we're advisory only. I just wanted to make sure. We don't have a heritage fund to transfer.
That I agree.
The only thing with warrants sometimes, you know, we need to be real careful about how we word things, and we try to go by what either DRA, Department of Revenue Administration, and our town attorneys say. Otherwise, you know, it could be invalid if we don't...
So this is the good, the way it is?
This? I haven't... I don't know that our Board has seen that yet, and...
Copy this to Troy, and Council has seen it.
Okay.
Because she helped us do this piece.
Okay. So our Board has not seen that as of yet. We meet Monday night.
Okay.
So I certainly... I mean, if it's according to what Town Council says, I'm sure it'll be fine, but I can't speak for the rest of the Board, and I don't see an issue with that.
Very good. All right. If there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion that the new section 1040.00 to the zoning ordinance for demolition review of structures built prior to 1960 and greater than 500 feet contingent upon the establishment of a Litchfield Heritage Commission, go to Town Meeting. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a second. Is there discussion? All right, all those in favor, we're going to do a roll call vote. Michael Proto, aye.
Brent Lemire, aye.
Kimberly Queen, an aye.
Tyler Perrin, aye.
Dave Samuel, aye.
Okay, very good. Motion passes 5-0-0. You will see this on the warrant article at Town Meeting. Okay, lastly, public hearing. "To amend the site plan review regulations, Section 115.2.65, nonconforming pre-existing luminaire and external lighting sections, 163.2 and 163.4, to allow in-kind replacement of nonconforming lighting and simplify general standards to say lighting and lights shall be shielded or buffered." Now, the question has been, why has this been proposed? Well, the grandfathering provisions were flagged by Town Council, and Town Council noted that legally, a property owner can make an in-kind replacement of an existing fixture even if it's nonconforming. Therefore, Council has questioned how the buffering from vehicle light would be interpreted or reviewed. So this basically was to try and address those concerns. I will open this up to public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak regarding this particular regulation? Very well, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any members of the... the members of the Board who have any questions regarding this this evening? Good. All good. Okay. With that said, I would entertain a motion that this particular plant... site plan reg... amendment to the site plan regulation, Section 115.2.65, nonconforming pre-existing luminaire and external lighting sections, 163.2 and 163.4, to allow in-kind replacement of nonconforming lighting and simplify general standards to say lighting and lights shall be shielded or buffered, be presented at Town Meeting.
No, you adopt.
I'm sorry, to adopt it. My apologies. I already did it myself. To adopt it for site plan regulations for the Planning Board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Very well, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Proto, aye.
Brent Lemire, aye.
Kimberly Queen, an aye.
Tyler Perrin, aye.
Dave Samuel, aye.
Very well, the motion passes 5-0-0. You will see this on the warrant article at Town Meeting. Okay, lastly, public hearing. "To amend the site plan review regulations, Section 115.2.65, nonconforming pre-existing luminaire and external lighting sections, 163.2 and 163.4, to allow in-kind replacement of nonconforming lighting and simplify general standards to say lighting and lights shall be shielded or buffered." Now, the question has been, why has this been proposed? Well, the grandfathering provisions were flagged by Town Council, and Town Council noted that legally, a property owner can make an in-kind replacement of an existing fixture even if it's nonconforming. Therefore, Council has questioned how the buffering from vehicle light would be interpreted or reviewed. So this basically was to try and address those concerns. I will open this up to public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak regarding this particular regulation? Very well, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any members of the... the members of the Board who have any questions regarding this this evening? Good. Okay. With that said, I would entertain a motion that this particular plant... site plan reg... amendment to the site plan regulation, Section 115.2.65, nonconforming pre-existing luminaire and external lighting sections, 163.2 and 163.4, to allow in-kind replacement of nonconforming lighting and simplify general standards to say lighting and lights shall be shielded or buffered, be presented at Town Meeting.
No, you adopt.
I'm sorry, to adopt it. My apologies. I already did it myself. To adopt it for site plan regulations for the Planning Board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Very well, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Proto, aye.
Brent Lemire, aye.
Kimberly Queen, an aye.
Tyler Perrin, aye.
Dave Samuel, aye.
Very well, the motion passes 5-0-0. You will see this...
Posted online, too?
Posted for Town Meeting. I'm sorry.
The updated site plan regs will get revised and posted online. Done.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no. These are updated, so there will be nothing at Town Meeting. My apologies. I got carried away. Okay. Moving on. Next item of business this evening, CF... S... I can't spell. SFC Engineering to describe proposed fire station site layout, building design. Those interested, please come forward, and you can sit at the table and introduce yourselves to the Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I might interrupt for a moment...
Sure.
Before we do introductions, this is Dave Samuel.
Yes.
I just want to make a note with the record that I'm in a platter to the property...
Okay.
And I want to make a note, make that note for the record.
Okay. So noted. Okay. Good evening.
Hello.
You introduce yourselves to the Board?
Sure. I'm Dan Flores with SFC Engineering. We are the civil engineers working on the site plan.
I'm Jonathan Oliver, Warrant Director.
I'm Frank Fritzel, Fire Chief.
Very good.
So I think the intent was kind of bring the Planning Board up to speed on where we're at with the current plans for the proposed fire station right here on the corner of Liberty Way in Albuquerque. So with that, I'll let these gentlemen make their presentation, and we'll go from there.
Can we switch to the site plan?
Yeah. Start here, or...
Hey, can we just get a quick overview? You go to the next sheet, please?
Sure.
This is the site development plan. On the lower right is the building we're in now, the Town Hall Police Station. The new fire station is shown up towards the center top with a future police station. We are expanding off of the existing parking lot for this building here, as well as access from Liberty Way. The building size itself is 12,700 square feet for the new fire station, 7,700 square feet for the new police station, for a total size of 20,400 square feet. You can see the parking area that's around three sides. A total of 83 parking spaces are provided, with four of them being accessible. The disturbance for this construction project will be 162,000 square feet, and there will not be any disturbance to the existing building we're in now, or that parking area. As far as environmental concerns, there's no floodplain in this area. There are no wetland impacts as part of this. For permitting, we have submitted to New Hampshire Department Environmental Services for an alteration of terrain permit, and that was received on November 21st, and we have submitted for a septic system design to New Hampshire Environmental Services, and that was... I actually requested more information on November 27th, so both of those are up there in the system. The development itself will add approximately 83,400...
Sorry. I was trying to see if I could zoom.
50 square feet of impervious area. Actually, if you can go to the next sheet.
Sure.
Can you say that impervious area again, please?
Sure. 83,450 square feet. On this plan here, on the right side of the parking, we have three new bio-retention areas that will be receiving and treating the runoff from that parking area. We also have two infiltration basins on the left side. They'll be taking the rest of that parking and about half of that building. The remaining of the... remainder of the building goes into some drip strips along the front edge, which are just stone trenches, as well as a leaching basin. The intent there is to receive the stormwater and infiltrate back into the ground as much as possible. This stormwater design exceeds both requirement for peak flow volume... I'm sorry, the peak flow and the volume.
And our town attorneys say, otherwise, you know, it could be invalid if we don't.
So this is the good the way it is?
This, um, I haven't, I don't know that our board has seen that yet, and, uh...
The copy that's at Troy and council has seen it.
Okay.
Because she helped us do this piece.
Okay, so our board has not seen that as of yet. We meet Monday night.
Okay.
So I, I certainly, uh, I mean, if it's according to what town council says, I'm, I'm sure it'll be fine, but I can't speak for the rest of the board, and I don't, I don't see an issue with that.
Very good.
That's the planning board one.
All right, if there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion that the new section, um, ten forty point zero zero to the zoning ordinance for demolition review of structures, built prior to nineteen sixteen, greater than five hundred feet contingent upon the establishment of a Litchfield Heritage Commission, go to town meeting. Do I have a motion?
Allo.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Is there discussion? All right, all those in favor, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Michael Proto, aye.
Brent Lemire, aye.
Kimberly Queen, an aye.
Tyler Perrin, aye.
Dave Samuel, aye.
Okay, very good. Motion passes, uh, five zero zero. You will see this on the warrant article at town meeting. Okay, lastly, uh, public hearing. To amend the site plan review regulations, section one, one five point two point six five, nonconforming preexisting luminaire and external lighting sections, one six three point two and one six three point four, to allow in-kind replacement of nonconforming lighting and simplify general standards to say lighting and lights shall be shielded or buffered. Now, the question has been, why has this been proposed? Well, the grandfathering provisions, um, were flagged by town council, and town council noted that legally, a property owner can make an in-kind replacement of an existing fixture, even if it's nonconforming. Therefore, council has questioned how the, um, buffering from vehicle light would be interpreted or reviewed. So this basically was to try and address, um, those, um, concerns. I will open this up to public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak regarding this, um, particular regulation? Very well, hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any members of the, uh, the, um, members of the board who have any questions regarding this, this evening? Good, all good, okay. With that said, I would, um, entertain a motion that this, uh, particular, um, plant, site plan reregla-, amendment to the site plan view regulation, section one, one five point two point six five, nonconforming preexisting luminaire and external lighting sections, one six three point two and one six three point four, to allow in-kind replacement of nonconforming lighting and simplify general standards to say lighting and lights shall be shielded or buffered, be, um, presented at town meeting.
Nope, you adopt.
I'm sorry, to adopt it. My apologies. I already did it myself. To adopt it, uh, for site plan, uh, regulations for the planning board. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Very well, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Proto, aye.
Brent Lemire, aye.
Kimberly Queen, an aye.
Tyler Perrin, aye.
Dave Samuel, aye.
Very well, the motion passes five zero zero. You will see this, um...
Posted online soon.
Posted, uh, at, for town meeting.
No.
I'm sorry.
The updated site plan regs will get revised and posted online. Done.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, the, the, these are updated, so there will be nothing at town meeting. My apologies. I got carried away, okay. Moving on. Next item of business this evening, uh, C F, uh, S, uh, I can't spell, SFC Engineering to describe proposed fire station site layout, building design. Uh, those interested, please come forward and you can sit at the table and introduce yourselves to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, if I might interrupt for a moment.
Sure.
Before we do the introductions, uh, this is Dave Samuel.
Yes.
I just wanna make a note with the record that I'm in a putter to the property.
Okay.
And, uh, wanna make a note, make that note for the record.
Okay, so noted. Good evening. You introduce yourselves to the board.
I'm Dan Flores with SFC Engineering. We are the civil engineers working on the site plan.
I'm Jonathan Oliver, Warren Street.
I'm Frank Freitzl, the fire chief. So I think the intent was kind of bring the planning board up to speed on where we're at with the, uh, current plans for the, uh, proposed fire station right here on the corner of Liberty Way and Albuquerque. So with that, I'll, I'll let these gentlemen, uh, make their presentation and we'll go from there.
Can we switch to the site plan?
Yeah. Start here, or?
Hey, can we just get a quick overview? You go to the next sheet, please?
Sure.
Uh, this is the site development plan. Um, on the lower right is the building we're in now, the Town Hall Police Station. The, uh, new fire station is shown up towards the center top, uh, with a future police station. We are expanding off of the existing, uh, parking lot for this building here, as well as access from Liberty Way. The building size itself is twelve thousand seven hundred square feet for the new fire station, seven thousand seven hundred square feet for the new police station, for a total size of twenty thousand four hundred square feet. Uh, you can see the, the parking area that's around three sides. A total of eighty-three parking spaces are provided, with four of them being accessible. The disturbance for this construction project will be a hundred and sixty-two thousand square feet, and there will not be any disturbance to the existing building we're in now, or that parking area. As far as environmental concerns, there's no floodplain in this area. There are no wetland impacts as part of this. For permitting, uh, we have submitted to New Hampshire Department Environmental Services for an alteration of terrain permit, and that was received on November twenty-first, and we have submitted for a septic system design to New Hampshire Environmental Services, and that was, um, actually requested more information on November twenty-seventh, so both of those are up there in the system. The development itself will add approximately eighty-three thousand four hundred...
Sorry, I was trying to see if I could zoom.
Fifty square feet of impervious area. Actually, if you can go to the, uh, next sheet.
Sure.
Can you say that impervious area again, please?
Sure. Um, eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty square feet. On this plan here, on the right side of the parking, we have, uh, three new bio-retention areas that'll be, uh, receiving and treating the, the runoff from that parking area. We also have two infiltration basins on the left side, that'll be taking the rest of that parking and about half of that building. The remaining of the buil-, remainder of the building goes into some drip strips along the front edge, which are just stone trenches, as well as a, um, a leaching basin. The intent there is to receive the stormwater and infiltrate back into the ground as much as possible. Um, this stormwater design, um, exceeds both requirement for peak flow volume, I'm sorry, the peak flow and the volume, uh, has been decreased for all storm events over the, um, pre-development. Uh, as far as utilities, we'll have new, um, water service. Actually, if you go to the next sheet, please. We have, um, a water line coming in down Liberty Way. We'll be tapping in off of that into the right side of the building there. Uh, new underground propane tanks to the left of the building, near the concrete apron, that is the exit for the, um, fire station garage. We have a new septic system, uh, towards the top of the building, off of Albe- Albuquerque, and then also a new power service with backup generator. So that's pretty much a, uh, a quick rundown of the site.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, does the board have any questions they'd like to ask concerning this project? I just wanna make clarification that this, uh, particular project, I believe, is a municipal project, so this is gone before the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And really, our, our authority here is, is very limited. We are basic, well, we only, actually don't have any authority. They're basically providing us with this information tonight and to see if we couldn't make any recommendations, uh, or anything to help them along. Uh, ultimately, it's the Board of Selectmen that has the, um, the authority in, uh, permitting this, so...
Right, the board felt that, you know, you guys work pretty hard on behalf of the town all year, that at least as a courtesy that, uh, you know, the plans should be brought to you, and, so that you can reflect and know what the intent is. And the, uh, again, the intent is, the board has determined to, to request, um, the, most immediate need right now is for a fire facility, and the board also sought input and received input and, um, asked to plan for a future police facility, uh, once the space needs, um, issues are taken care of at the police department down the road. At least the footprint and, and the, um, the, what I wanna say is whatever...
The infrastructure.
Uh-huh. Infrastructure, thank you. Will be, um, will be available. It, it will be a lot easier to add on, to make a public safety complex. But at this point, the board determined, um, that the most immediate need is for the fire facility.
Now, is this gonna be at, is this have to go to town meeting, or is this something that...
Yes.
Yeah, this has to be approved by the voters.
Right, and the interesting part is due to the fact that it's a bond issue, and due to the fact, um, that the bonds will not be issued, once it's approved at town meeting in March, the, um, bonds won't be sold until July. The first payment will not be until twenty nineteen. So this project will not have a financial impact on the twenty eighteen budget.
Do you know if it's a ten-year or twenty-year bond?
Don't know that yet.
Do you know when the bond hearing is?
Uh, the, we're, what we're trying to do, Joan, is, uh, try to schedule it the same night as the public hearing on the budget.
On the budget.
Um, and we're still awaiting, you know, financing. We're trying to get the figures as, as quickly as we can. The problem is what we found out, and, and I'm sure you people verify that. Due to the hurricanes and, and all of the natural disasters that we've had, apparently that caused a spike in construction costs because there's, you know, you know, everybody's trying to get new construction material. So we're trying to deal with that fact, too, that it, we went from a situation of an ideal time to build, uh, financially to now we're in a, a, a situation where, you know, we, we're talking about three hurricanes here that devastated, you know, a good part of the southern United States, and now, now we have to deal with the cost factors. So we're, we're addressing that also, so...
Can I ask the chief a question?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question about hearings? Chief, are you planning any other hearings or public, um, displays besides deliberative session?
Uh, we're working on scheduling some things now.
Yeah, we, we, uh, between, from what we understand, between the, um, construction management people, the fire department, and, um, the Board of Selectmen, we're, once we get as much information as we can, we're gonna get this out to the people, um, as, as quickly as we can and as, as comprehensively as we can. Um, we want them to, and, and like we said, we found out that there's no impact on this budget. So the Budget Committee, uh, we had a conversation with them, they will be able to, if they so desire, they will be able to recommend it. Because there's no impact.
That's kind of deceiving, though, I think. There's no impact in two thousand eighteen, but there could be, there'll be impact for ten or twenty more years.
Correct, but the thing is, Joan, they, um, before, they couldn't recommend it no matter what because of the tax cap, no matter what the, the issue is. Okay, but since there's no impact, if they feel that it's a worthy project, which, you know, after the presentation, they will be able to recommend it this year. They would not be able to next year, even though they felt that they wanted to approve it.
So, just a quick question, how does that affect the tax cap in two thousand nineteen? There'd be a payment in two thousand nineteen. Does that go against the tax cap?
It'll, it'll be, no, because it will be a contractual item that will be within the default budget.
Okay, thanks.
So i- it works well for everybody involved, the taxpayer, the, you know, the Budget Committee. It seems everything works well the way that it's gonna condense it, so we're, we're very hopeful and we're very, um, we're excited that we can probably after twenty-seven years get this thing done, we hope, 'cause, um, you know, every time you drive by there and you see a million dollars' worth of equipment sitting outside, uh, it's, it's not a good thing for the taxpayer, you know.
How many, how many bays are you gonna have for fire trucks?
It's gonna be five bays that'll hold two, two deep, so two trucks, front to back. So, as you can see, your, the top is the, uh, top image is, is the Albuquerque Ave, face of the building. Obviously, the bottom is, is the, uh, what we'd be looking at if we looked out the window here, or stepped out of, out of the building here, and then your, your north and south exposures. Um, I think if, if, Jennifer, you can go back to the, to the site plan.
Sure.
Please. I do wanna note that there is a curb cut onto Albuquerque. Um, that is an emergency access, only that's not gonna be, you know, for in-and-out parking to the back of the building. The, the daily parking, visitor commuter, whatever you wanna call parking, will be accessed off the, one of the two curb cuts on Liberty. The, um, one way out to Liberty is purely for, uh, emergency response purposes.
So that's one of my questions, um, with the, the trucks entering, um, Albuquerque. Is there some notification that'll be up, you know, up the street or down the street for vehicles to know that there could be a fire truck flying out? Um, and that, and, and also just, well, I guess for the, the pedestrians on the trail that are, that's right outside here, for them, it'll probably be pretty obvious. Um, but, just for the vehicles, you're just thinking about the safety of trucks entering and exiting, we certainly wanna make sure the trucks have that right away, um...
So, two things, and I'll, I'll let, uh, SFC address it, 'cause I think, um, if we were to access out onto Liberty, it's, as you can see, about a third, if not only a quarter, of the width.
Oh, yeah, no, that's...
So, so the width is, does make that, gives them a lot more, if something were coming. There would be, uh, the signage similar to what's at the current fire station on Chautauqua Craft. You know, uh, a couple hundred yards north and south of the, of the, uh, station, so...
Electronic signs or sta-, or, uh, or static signs?
What was the question, Joan?
Electronic signs or, or, uh, standard?
I mean, we've had static forever and, and haven't had an issue.
I remember asking the state for electronic signs for three A, which is a far worse exit that they're in now than, than this is gonna, and, um, the cost was, of course, they passed the cost on to the town. You know, even though it's a state road, you know, and we asked at a hundred, wait a minute, this is your road. You know, can't you put a, oh, well, at a, at a nominal fee, we'll put this up for you.
You had another one?
I did. Oh, response times, and I, I apologize, I should've followed up with Ryan in my office, um, before coming here this, this evening. I know you've been working with Ryan, um, in my, at National Regional Planning Commission. He's gonna plug this all into the traffic mo-, into our transportation model to look at response times in town, and I'm just kinda curious how, um, things are playing out, uh, with the results.
So we actually have, um, thanks to NRPC, we have a couple of maps, um, with, uh, existing conditions, proposed conditions, that being response times, that both apparatus from the station to an incident, as well as where our current staff reside to both stations, so we can so, show both sides of the equation. And, and quite candidly, it, it decreases the response time to a considerable amount of time. Likewise, it lengthens to some areas that are now short, are gonna go a little longer, but in, in the, in the biggest percentage, it decreases the response time to a much more significant part of town than, uh, it increases. And I think there was one more question you were gonna answer, or did I cover it?
Uh, you, just, uh, there, there are two signs, there's a sign on each end. You can see one right there for the fire station, right on the, the right side.
So just up around west view.
There's one there, and one on the other end.
So, I'm gonna jump in here with a couple of questions. I hear that there's a little bit of conversation still going on. I'd, uh, I'd recommend seriously doing an evaluation of the signage, as was earlier suggested. I understand the earlier three A conversation, however, this is a different scenario, um, it's a different situation, and I speculate that the cost of one lost life on Albuquerque, or three A for that matter, is going to far outweigh the cost of putting in a, uh, putting in a sign, or, an electronic sign, or, uh, some type of, uh, flashing lights, or something along those lines. So that's one note, um, so I would, I would strongly recommend doing some type of evaluation on that. The, uh, second note that I had for you gentlemen is on the site development plans, Litchfield Fire Station, uh, November fifteen, twenty seventeen, on page nine, um, I think it's lovely that for, um, for the building water service, you want to adhere to, uh, Salem technical specifications. Can I recommend that that actually be, uh, the Litchfield technical specifications instead?
Where was it?
Page nine.
Um, Dave, where on the page was that note? Was it top right?
What page was that?
It's right on the building water service.
Page nine.
Page nine.
Of, page nine of the site development plans themselves, and, uh, that's under the building water services, the first note there.
I'm still not in the right spot.
Uh, all material and installation procedures will conform to Town of Salem technical specifications. I, I'm assuming that's an oversight?
It is, I'm sure.
Uh, correct, yes.
They said yes.
Good catch, Mr. Samuel.
There we go.
Thank, thank you, and, um, and my last comment, uh, in, in general is, has there been any study done? I, I know that you mentioned in your opening comments, uh, a number of environmental concerns. Has there been any study done on the impact of the aquifer? I'm as, I'm assuming you're gonna be going well here, um, although I didn't see that detailed, I might have missed it. Um, I'm wondering whether or not there's been any study done as to what the impact of the aquifer from the additional use will be?
It's public water. It'll be connected to public water, Dave.
Where, where did I miss that? I must've missed that somewhere along the line.
Go back to the, there's a utility plan that shows the water coming in Liberty?
There's a utility plan shows the water coming in Liberty, they're saying?
Which page, I'm sorry?
Sheet number five.
Sheet number five.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, I apologize.
I can't read the, on the screen.
If you don't ask, you don't know.
Right there.
I have one question, Mike.
Sure.
Will all the, will all of the parking eighty-three spots be built at once?
Um, that's yet to be determined. We've master planned the site plan for a public safety complex for both uses. The construction manager has been selected and they're in the process now of pricing the project, and it, it'll be a conversation with the town as to how much of the overall plan they wanna build out with, with the initial plan, if you will, with the initial fire station.
Okay, thank you.
I know with another site plan application we had earlier this year, um, they were proposing phased construction, uh, where second phase would almost double their, um, capacity. Uh, and we had recommended that they also phase their parking, because there was absolutely no reason to go ahead and build all of the parking. Unless we were absolutely gonna need it for, you know, so we said, you know, hold off on the second phase of parking until you're gonna construct the second phase of the building and then do the, do it together, but pave what you have to pave, and...
Right, that makes sense.
I, I think back to Joan, a couple of other things as far as the informational. Working with, um, the, the construction management firm Ekman Construction, they actually have a webpage that's, that's devoted purely to the fire station, uh, that, that should be going live. It, it is live, if you know how to get to it. We're working the bugs out of it, but it should be going live here, um, within probably a week or so. So that will, will answer a lot of questions, um, all of the plan, site plan stuff, and, and, um, frequently asked questions and so forth, will be, will be right there on the webpage, uh, as well as activities that we're, we're coordinating logistics of, uh, right now will be on the, on that webpage, so... Um, once that goes live, obviously, we will, we will get that out through, um, all kind of media blasts so that, uh, there is a, a, a source of information that's updated on a regular basis by Ekman as this process moves along, so...
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Do you wanna look at the architecturals?
You can. Some of you might remember that, um, at least Warren Street's been involved with the fire station for, I think, since two thousand four. So the building has been designed, um, three times on two different, like, two different locations, embedded through, I'm guessing, four fire chiefs, three fire chiefs.
Two thousand four?
Yeah.
Three.
Three, yep. So we've, we've, um, we've improved the two thousand four model and brought it up to today's standards and done a number of changes, if you will, internally. The apparatus bays will accommodate all of the equipment, um, that the fire department presently has and plans to have into the future. Um, all the doors are more than adequate in height to allow for any, any apparatus that you might purchase in the future. Tanker trucks can be filled from within the apparatus bay, um, from overhead. Currently, um, we have, uh, administrative space, um, for the fire department, and we have arranged, modified the original plans, the two thousand four, two thousand eight plans, to move all of the common space, the bathrooms, the meeting room, those things, in a location on the floor plan that could potentially be shared with the police department, when and if it ever gets added to this building. So there's a possibility of not having redundant bathrooms or redundant meeting space. Um, the meeting space is accessible from the outside, along with a bathroom, and where the fire department could be locked down and you don't have access to the, to the full floor.
How many employees are you gonna have, um, operating the station, Sharon?
So the current staffing is two full-time, myself, and then approximately thirty-eight on-call. Um, there's no intended changes to that staffing, and at least in the foreseeable future.
Any other questions? Jen, you have anything?
I've asked one of my stockholder questions, I guess. Um, materials, durability, wear and tear for the community in terms of...
Um, you know, it's a...
Material selection? Material selection?
It's a modest build, if you will. It's asphalt shingled roofs, it's a thirty-year asphalt architectural shingle. There are, um, two materials planned for the outside to be priced by Ekman. One is a hardy plank cement board, um, that needs to be painted every ten years. The second is a vinyl product, um, that we'll look at. These are decisions that'll be made down the road in terms of, um, cost and availability. All of the trim is a PVC product, so, you know, it's, they're, they're materials that are consistent with what we're doing elsewhere in the community and around the state.
Is it gonna look, look like similar to this building's outlook, almost, almost mirrored?
One-story, simple truss, gave...
Like that? Very good.
No, in, in conversations with the, you know, there's been a lot of conversations around what this building will be and, and the design elements and, you know, um, the chief was very consistent with maintaining, it's a modest build, it's not by any means over the top. It'll serve your needs long into the future.
Is there gonna be a, um, an ambulance and can you put an ambulance in there and all that stuff, or is there room for it?
It could, but currently, they don't need it.
There's no, there's no plan in the foreseeable future to add, you know, the ambulance service.
That is a, that is a big, that would be a very big, um, change in service.
Quite, quite candidly...
Quite costly.
The level of service and the quality of service we're getting now from Hudson, for what we're paying, it would be s- such a significant increase to run our own ambulance, that it, you know, I, I, I can't in good conscience propose it, so. The space, obviously, there's space to accommodate with, you know, 'cause we would make changes with equipment at the time, where right now, we don't have the space to put an ambulance. There would be space there by, by moving things around within, um, but th- there's no, no intent going forward. There, there's no bay dedicated to an ambulance at this point, because that would quite honestly be, you know, I don't wanna say wasted space, but space we don't have a, a foreseeable use for, and therefore, it would get used for other things and so. But there is, there would be room, easily, easy to make room to put an ambulance, if the community should choose that at some point down the road. Where we don't have that ability currently, so. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Do you know if this is gonna, are they gonna be coming before the Board of Selectmen again, or what's the... Oh, yeah, Monday night.
Oh, yes.
Monday night.
Oh, Monday night, they'll be coming, um, yes. And, and we're, we're gathering all the information that we can. And we've asked the town administrator to work with them to get as close to a, a, a firm figure as we can to put it out there. We want the figure out there for the people. And it, the best, uh, that they can determine, and we certainly understand that, uh, things are in flux right now, but we need to get a figure to the budget committee, and, um, we need to get the figure out to the taxpayer.
Just noise, I'm, I'm going back to the nineteen seventies emergency show, when a call came in, the sound that was outside, is that gonna happen here? Because it's in a residential area, it's all internal?
That sound wasn't outside.
It sounded pretty loud on the show.
No, no, that's all in the station, that was the, that was the alert.
I just want the neighbors, you know, with the, on Albuquerque, you know, at two in the morning.
That was the alert inside the firehouse for the guys. It sounded like it was all over the place.
It did, alright.
Actually, there'll be a large speaker directed towards Dave's house.
Yeah, yeah, right.
No, I'm just kidding, Dave. No, there will obviously...
Boy, that won't come up.
Just making sure you were still there. Uh, there will be, obviously, um, alerting capabilities within the entire building and in the bays. So, obviously, on a summer day and when the doors are open, yeah, you may hear it, you know, in the immediate, but it, it's, at, at night, the doors are closed and...
It's not broadcast out through a speaker, no.
There's no intent to put outside speakers at this point in time, so.
So, no, we can Dave up at three in the morning?
I saw, like, in I T., we have backups and backup for the backups. I saw you had a power generator in case you lost power, right?
Yeah, there'll be a full generator capable doing the building, the entire building.
And Dave's application to the fire department... Dave, your application to the fire department, I'll bet it'll go through real quick.
Excellent, excellent, it sounds good. And if anyone wanna borrow my little gas generator, just let me know.
Well, I saw you had one, and then, um, communications, I'm sure you have local wireless to back up the old-fashioned phone lines and all that, right?
Yeah, there'd actually be a fiber line between here and the station.
I'm just thinking, a, a plane comes down in Manchester and wipes out, you know, a couple of roads.
There's a redundancy all over.
There is redundancy, so it's not just limited code, you have extra...
Oh, no, and, and there's mutual aid redundancy, there's, um, the fire service has done pretty well in, in preparing for these issues.
We actually will be going to the crash, so.
Yeah, exactly, and I like the location, so. What about the water, though? You're saying you get it from the public?
Well, municipal water, no different than this building.
Would they ever shut the water line down?
Kinda check.
Which is the way, the, the current station's on kinda check water, at least for the last four years. What do you, uh, do we know, we're gonna, they're looking to do with the old fire station?
Uh, we were, um, I met, the, so that, you know, the, uh, head, the chair of the school board, the superintendent of schools, the chair of the budget committee, myself as chair of the board of selectmen, and the town administrator have been meeting on a regular basis, um, to discuss issues that are important between us. And one of the issues is the, the, uh, use of the old fire station. The problem is, uh, right now, we have not determined what will happen with, there are potential, you, the problem is, the building right now does not meet the code, correct, Chief?
Correct.
We cannot utilize that building for anything other than probably a storage facility at this point, without a major investment in infrastructure upgrade to meet the code, the life safety code and the building code. The school department in, has, um, expressed interest, uh, since it is a storage, the first floor is a storage area for vehicles, um, between the school department and, and other entities, that might be, uh, an area that we could help the school department in storing some of their vehicles and equipment and upstairs stores. Basically, the building can only be used for that at this point. Once, you know, we try to do a reuse of that, w- we're sunk. The fire marshal be down here in about thirty seconds saying, "I don't think so," to me. So... So, yeah, the short answer is, we're talking about it, um, but basically, um, we'll probably only be able to use that building for storage.
As, as exists currently, it pretty much all it can be used for. Any other type of use would require upgrading to whatever that use would be, and there's obviously gonna be a considerable cost to do that.
The building was, the initial building was built in nineteen fifty-eight. By Litchfield firefighters. And they, and I don't know if any of you know this, but they, you know, a little tidbit of history, they went up and all of the back here were woods. They went up and got the wood themselves, they s- uh, out of the woods, came back, so, you know, um, they, they trimmed the lumber, built it up, and put the stucco on the outside. And they, they added on to it in the fifty-eight, there was only like two bays, and then they added on about six years later, another two bays in the back. And then in nineteen eighty, nineteen seventy-nine, eighty, the firefighters, you know, rebuilt the whole back part with donated materials. And I mean, the town actually has not invested much money in that building.
Maintenance only.
Maintenance only. Uh, everything, that building was either donated or gotten by hand. But the problem is, the code's changed, the, uh, and...
Can I ask a quick design question? I'm sitting here on my end, and I'm still looking at the, uh, the master plan, and, um, I know, I'm sure that at some level or another, you, you gentlemen, it's given this much deeper consideration than I have, but as I look at the, the plan with the five bays for leading on to Albuquerque, if you're running five trucks out of there, it, for some reason or another, I was trying to figure out what looked funny, what looked funny to me is that, that you look like you've got about four and three-quarter trucks worth of driveway. And I'm wondering, it seems to taper inward, and I'm just wondering if it makes a little more sense to have that be a little straighter, to be quite honest.
Dave, the, uh, the chance of five trucks pulling out all at the same time and, and fighting for street access is, is slim to none.
Slim to none.
They're gonna turn one at a time.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're, they're, even now with two bays, uh, we, we designate vehicles that are, are what we call our first two, our primary truck. So, even if the two trucks are pulling out together, that first two truck has priority and, and will take the lead, so, uh, that's more than adequate for with what you're seeing there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming in and providing us with this, uh, information, and, um, I'm sure we'll be seeing this on the, um, the ballot at the town meeting. And, uh, obviously, there'll be other, there'll be another hearing on this, uh, with the Board of Selectmen, so.
We try to provide you with the information we get it. Okay, so that you, you be kept in...
And obviously, if there's ever any questions, don't hesitate to shoot me an email, or and we can get the question answered, so. Very good. Thank you, Chief, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
For coming in, have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, I think we're alright.
Yes, we're, we're getting there. Sorry. Alright, the next item up on the agenda, committee reports. Are there any reports from committees?
Um, we do have, I didn't, I put it on the site, but I didn't, um, really put it on the agenda. We have a gentleman present that dropped off his application.
Oh, that's right.
His application was on the site. Paige, A J.
Yes, we have a, uh, prospective applicant for the planning board, uh, and, uh, alternate position, I believe.
Alter.
Yes.
Your name again, sir?
Dennis Page.
Dennis Page, and you live at Page?
On Page Road.
Wow, that's kinda like that.
What, um, what made you decide your interest in, what's your interest in the, uh, the planning board?
More experience in how the municipalities operate.
You have an interest in municipal government, or...
Correct, uh, more building inspection, I'm going to school, I'm finishing school this semester for a building inspector's certificate. And this is a good, uh, this is a good step in the right direction of, you know, keeping up with planning and building plans and zoning and CBA, all that, so.
Does the board have any questions they'd like to ask of the applicant?
So, he'd be coming to the selectmen anyway, too, right?
Well, we're, we're gonna vote on that, yes.
Yeah. And so, um, I'm sure our members will wanna thank him for, for coming forward.
Yes, definitely, for your, your service.
Well, I work for, uh, I work for a plumbing company, Heritage Plumbing and Heating, and I've been, uh, in charge of doing all their permitting and code enforcement within the company for the past five years. So, I've gotten to know a lot of the, all the communities in this area. So, this is, uh, this is the right step, and for me, anyway, for my career going forward, this is a good step in the right direction for...
In terms of availability, are you available every other Tuesday night?
Every other Tuesday.
Yeah, there is a commitment, obviously, um, the first and third Tuesdays of the month is normally when we meet. And, um, you know, we start at seven o'clock, so. But if you feel that you can meet that commitment, um, great, we'd love to have you. Sounds like you have some great experience and would be, uh, you know, a big asset to, to the planning board.
Great.
So, if, does anybody else have any questions? Dave, do you have any questions? I know you're on the speakerphone.
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, alright.
Thanks, Dave.
Alright, well, if that, if there are no questions, um, I would entertain a motion to ask that, uh, Dennis Page's name be submitted, um, to the Board of Selectmen for, um, approval, for possible, or possible approval of the, um, to be nominated to the planning board.
As an alternate?
As an alternate.
As an alternate, yes. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do I have a discussion? Alright, all in favor, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Michael Frodo, aye.
Mayor, aye.
Kimberly Queen, an aye?
Try to pair an aye.
Dave, aye.
Alrighty, motion passes five zero zero. Congratulations and I hope good luck. And, um, obviously, you'll, you'll be meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
We can probably handle this, uh, Joan, will you take care of getting this Monday night?
I'll talk to Troy.
Talk to Troy. Uh, this should be, uh, uh, very easily taken care of Monday night.
Okay.
I have to be at that meeting, that hearing also?
Yes.
It, it'd certainly be helpful.
Be helpful, the board is prob- probably might want to just ask them...
May not have any questions, may just wanna thank you for stepping up.
Oh, sorry, I'll work it out.
So, they can get to meet you and...
Right.
Sure.
So, like, we're having this conversation tonight, you're programming a conversation with them.
Perfect.
Alright, that meeting's at six.
Yes.
Next Monday.
Do they start at six, your meeting?
Yeah, the board start, the, selectmen starts at six.
A week from the...
And it's a brief meeting Monday night, it's gonna be a brief, it's a brief meeting Monday night, but we can handle that.
Alright.
Alright, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, great.
I was asked to come down for lot eighty-eight for a sign that you signed off on.
Um... That was on the agenda, the beginning of December, and no one showed up.
Yeah, there were three applications, and, yeah, that was one of, that was like the first one.
The sign application and, um...
But the, nobody showed up for the hearing.
We needed a hundred-dollar, um, permit fee, and we had the sign that's back on the site of, uh, December fifth.
Oh, okay.
Can we do something with that tonight?
Nope, wasn't noticed.
No, it, it's gotta be noticed, and they need to, um, come before us, so, what's gonna have to happen is, it's gonna have to be noticed again, and then you would have to come back and, uh, before the board.
Are we meeting December nineteenth?
We are, we have a, we do have a site review on that evening, uh, we don't have a workshop, just...
We have the, um, the roof.
So, if you wanna do it then, is that enough time, though, for notice?
We don't have to put in the paper, doesn't need to go on the paper, it just has to be on the agenda.
As long as it's on the agenda, and it's not, then you should be...
December nineteenth, can you make?
So, why don't you do that, come in on the nineteenth of December?
Let somebody get a hundred-dollar check over and made to the town, let you know? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, moving on, committee reports, any reports from any committees? I believe the lower mayor, Macklemore, local advisory committee is meeting this December. I wasn't sure, though, if they were meeting on the seventh or the fourteenth, I have to verify that with Jean Porter. Other than that, oh, and I have been nominated to the, uh, local mayor, Mac, local advisory committee once again, so, I got my papers in the mail the other day, so. And we are still looking for people to, uh, we, we would like to find another person for that committee. If, uh, anyone in town is interested, um, in the position, you know, you can talk to, myself, or, um, you can, um, talk to Jen, she may, she can give you the, uh, uh, information from NRPC for the lower mayor, Mac, and advisory committee. So, just putting it out there, okay. Uh, approval of the November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen minutes. Do we have an opportunity to look at the minutes, and do we have any questions, concerns? Okay, um, if not, I would entertain a motion to allow or approve of the minutes. Alright, I have a motion to approve, uh, like him, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second, is there just any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approval of the November, um, what is it, November twenty? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the November, what is it, November twenty-first minutes? I'm gonna do a roll call, signify by saying aye, Michael Proto, aye.
Brent Lamir's going to abstain.
Kimberly Queen, an aye?
Tyler Perrin, aye.
Dave Samuel, aye.
Okay, the motion passes four, zero, one. Any other business this evening, Jen, do we have anything?
Uh, nothing tremendously exciting or new, other than I have your twenty eighteen calendar prepared and it is now posted on the calendar tab, under resources on your Google site.
Okay, very good.
I will note, you do have a couple holidays, like your first meeting in twenty nineteen is on January first, so you may wanna think about canceling that one. You have some time.
Yeah, 'cause I won't be there.
In spirit.
Not even there.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Yes, Kim.
Do we need another commissioner for NRPC?
You do need another commissioner for NRPC, so it's just you, Kim. So you do have two seats, that would be something, I think, traditionally, the planning board recommends to the selectmen, it is the selectmen that makes the appointment to the regional planning commission.
Well, I was gonna.
We will await the recommendation.
I was gonna actually, I was going, I was gonna express an interest in coming on as a commissioner again. But obviously, that's something that the board would have to nominate and so it's up to you guys. But I can certainly do that, take the place, if you need somebody.
What's the, what's, how is it, what is it, what's the?
Well, we meet quarterly.
Once a quarter?
Like, once a quarter, usually at the end of the quarter, what, thirteen towns, neighboring towns of Litchfield?
Is that like that meeting that you and I and Tom went to?
Yes, we, we went to the one, one time, yeah, so we're trying to see regionally what other planning boards are doing as well.
You think you'd be interested in doing that?
Uh, yeah, I could probably do that.
All right.
Once a quarter, isn't it?
I don't mind taking that up Monday night, too, if you can get that over.
Okay.
If you want.
All right, well, entertain a motion to have Tyler be nominated for the commissioner position for NRPC to be sent to the Board of Selectmen for Monday evening.
So moved.
Aye.
I'll second that.
Second by Kim, any discussion?
Aye.
Hearing none. Roll call vote, Michael Proto, aye.
Brent Lamir, aye.
Kimberly Queen, an aye?
Dave Samuel, aye.
You can vote.
I abstain.
Okay. Motion passes four, zero, one, okay, very good, so you'll have him on the agenda.
To the next meeting is December twentieth.
December twentieth, yes, December twentieth.
December twentieth, very good.
There you go.
I won't be there.
What's the time?
I'll be in there soon.
I'll, I'll show you the website.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. Joan, do you have anything else?
Just have one thing, there was a hearing last night in Bedford for a seventy-five foot tall farm silo cell tower at Five Wallace Road. I looked at Google Maps, it's near Wire Road, I believe, so probably not visible from Litchfield, but they have to send to the twenty area towns.
Okay. All righty, well, if there's nothing else for this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, I have two seconds, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye, a roll call vote, Michael Proto, aye.
Brent Lamir, aye.
Kimberly Queen, an aye?
Tyler Perrin, aye.
Dave Samuel, aye.
Very good, motion passes five, zero, zero. Thank you all for joining us this evening, we'll see you on December.